Okay, stand by and you're on.
Thank you, sir. So it is for the record by my clock 4:04 Wednesday afternoon and I'd like to call the regular meeting of the governing body for October 28th, 4:00 PM session to order. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance led by Councilor Vial Coppler, salute to the New Mexico flag led by Councilwoman Vidal and an invocation led by Counselor Lindell and then we'll have remembrances following that. So if you please rise as you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the Zia symbol of perfect friendship amongst united cultures.
Good evening, everybody. I thought I'd do something a little bit different tonight. Something I think we probably all aspire to and it's called the code of the West. Live each day with courage, take pride in your work, always finish what you start, do what has to be done, be tough but fair. When you make a promise, keep it, ride for the brand, talk less and say more. Remember that some things aren't for sale. Know where to draw the line. Do we have some remembrances for this evening? Mayor, you can, I don't, you can call on us, please?
Does anyone have someone they'd like to speak on behalf of or a group, a general perception of folks who are in pain that we want to remember? Counselor Rivera.
Yeah, Mayor, I mentioned this at our other meeting, but it wasn't a regular meeting. So I'm not sure how many people were in attendance, but I just wanted to remember Fire Chief, retired Fire Chief Peter Duran and retired engineer David Gomez, who were both with the fire department and did great jobs while they were here. Chief Peter Duran will always be remembered in my heart as somebody that really changed the fire department in the city and made it a fully professional fire department and that was huge. And then Dave Gomez just did a great job through throughout his career was EMT and a firefighter and just did fabulous work. So just want to remember them and let their families know that we miss them and we remember them and appreciate the work they did on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Others who have a person in their heart. I have a friend from who had a presence here in Santa Fe with the predictions company who I learned today passed away, a management thinker, writer, leader, a very talented individual who always gave to others and had a great generous spirit, passed away. And he contributed to Santa Fe, but he also contributed all over the United States with his, with his thoughts about how to make business a better and more humane enterprise. So his name is Chris Meyer and I'm sending my wishes to his family as well. If there are no other people to be named, let's just take a minute and bow our heads and think of those who were enduring COVID-19, who are dealing with family issues and who we wish healing and, and care for. Let's just take a minute. Thank you, everybody. So with that said, could the clerk please call the roll for us?
Yes, Mayor Weber.
Present.
Counselor Beta.
Here.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez.
Here.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Lindell.
Here.
Counsel Rivera.
Here.
Counselor Mayor Worth.
Here.
Counselor Vial Coppler.
Here.
Counselor Vial Real.
Present.
Do you have a quorum present, Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can we get a motion either to amend or to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Counselor Vial Coppler has moved to approve the agenda and Counselor Lindell has seconded. Is there discussion? And if not, could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Beta.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Lindell.
Yes.
Counselor Rivera.
Yes.
Mayor Worth.
Yes.
Counselor Vial Coppler.
Yes.
Counselor Vial Real.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved.
Thank you. That brings us, for those who are following us on YouTube or at home, item number seven is the consent calendar. I think there are several items that are up to be pulled off of the consent calendar. Counselor Mayor Worth, did you have something you needed to attend to?
Yes, Mayor, I need to pull item F to recuse myself from that vote.
Okay, item F will come off of the consent calendar. Others? Counselor Vial Coppler.
Mayor, I would like to pull item 10J.
Item J taken off of the consent calendar. Are there other items from the consent calendar that members of the governing body wish to remove? If not, can we get a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended?
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
I heard Counselor Mayor Worth's motion and Counselor Lindell's second discussion. If not, could the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Yes, Counselor Cassidy Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Lindell.
Yes.
Counselor Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Mayor Worth.
Yes.
Counselor Vial Coppler.
Yes.
Counselor Vial Real.
Yes.
Counselor Beta.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion has been approved.
Thank you. Item number eight is approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. There was the emergency governing body meeting of October the 12th, 2020. Are there corrections, additions, changes to those minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Counselor Vial Coppler moved to approve those minutes and Counselor Lindell seconded that motion. Could we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Lindell.
Yes.
Counselor Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Mayor Worth.
Yes.
Counselor Vial Coppler.
Yes.
Counselor Vial Real.
Yes.
Counselor Beta.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is approved.
Thank you. And the second of the sets of minutes is the regular governing body meeting of October 14th, 2020. Are there changes to those minutes? If not, can we get a motion to approve those?
Move to approve.
Second. Second.
Counselor Lindell moved to approve those and Counselor Vial Coppler, I believe, was the first to second. Could we get a call of the roll on that motion?
Or Counselor Lindell.
Yes.
Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Mayor Worth.
Yes.
Counselor Vial Coppler.
Yes.
Counselor Vial Real.
Yes.
Counselor Beta.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion has been approved.
Thank you. Item number nine, Madam Clerk, I think there are no presentations tonight.
That's correct, Mayor.
So with that, could you present us with item 10F, which was taken off of consent so that Counselor Mayor Worth can recuse herself?
Yes, it's a long one. Request for approval of multiple service agreements in the total amount of $3,749,652 for prevention and intervention services for the youth of Santa Fe for three years, and these are for the following. Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Mountain Region, 50,000, Communities and Schools of New Mexico, 50,000, Cooking with Kids, 20,000, Esperanza Shelter, 37,000, Georgia O'Keeffe Community Educators Network, 37,000, Gerard's House, 80,000, Girls Inc., 40,000, New Mexico Suicide Intervention Project, 75,000, New Vista's, 20,000, PIE, Fathers New Mexico, 30,000, PI, which is Parent Evolution Program, 10,000, Santa Fe Recovery Center, 40,000, SFCC Kids Campus, 70,000, SFPs Breakthrough Santa Fe, 27,000, SFPs of the Lente Program, 74,000, SFPs Distortive Justice Program, 50,000, SDPS Teen Parent Program, 96,328, Site Santa Fe, 35,000, United Way of Santa Fe County, 80,000, Youth Shelters and Family Services, 100,000, and Youth Works, $48,556. And we do have Julie Sanchez available for any questions.
And Counselor Mayor Worth, do you want to explain your conflict or you just want to leave the meeting?
No, I'm happy to. So it's recently come to light that I should recuse myself from this vote because I sit on the advisory committee of one of the recipients. And apparently that while I don't gain from the grant in any personal way because of my role as a board member or advisory committee member, I've been advised by the city attorney's office that I should not vote on this. So I am recusing myself.
Thank you. You gonna turn your camera off or something? You're gonna mute yourself?
She has to depart the meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, legally she has to depart the meeting. I know you all have done that before. I think you did counsel her. There she goes. Okay. Ms. Sanchez is here with Tina to answer any questions that might come up. Are there questions on this item? Counselor Lindell.
Thank you, Mayor. We talked about this some in finance committee and I'm asking that this is a, this is no small amount of money and I'm asking that we would be given updates at least annually of, I guess what I would like to see and we weren't presented with is, what are the marks that we expect these groups to hit in return for the monies that we're investing? I mean, this is closer to 4 million than it is 3 million. I realize it's over the course of three years, but I don't want this to go three years before I hear anything about how these groups are implementing their programs and that they're hitting some measurements and what the expected measurements are that we have for these groups. So I think it's reasonable that minimally we should get an annual report and know how these groups are functioning and implementing these funds. I also am not really sure what the criteria was for selecting the groups that have been selected. I have to be honest, there's a couple of these groups that I'm unfamiliar with and, you know, I'm pretty involved around town. So it's kind of surprising to me that there's some that I haven't heard of. There's others and, you know, I'm not looking for an answer to this. This is a comment that I would really like the commitment that we get an annual report of how these funds are being implemented because it is no small amount of money. So those are my comments on it.
Thank you, Counselor. Ms. Sanchez, I don't know, Counselor Lindell didn't ask for a response, but I don't know if you would like to provide one just in terms of your, your commitment to responding to her request?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilwoman Lindell. So part of the Children Youth Commission ordinance is to present information to the governing body on a yearly basis and I will continue to be committed to doing that. And so you can expect information and data sometime around, probably I would actually say, spring of next year. And I'll make sure to commit both myself and my team to getting that presentation together. And by that time, we'll be able to have all the performance measures as well as data from the Unites platform that we use to present to the governing body.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments about this item? Is there a motion?
To approve.
Counselor Garcia?
Second.
Second, I heard Counselor Vial Real, but I think somebody beat you to the punch, but I wasn't sure who it was. It's okay. Motion made, seconded. Is there further discussion? If not, could the clerk please call the roll on this item F?
Yes. Counselor Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Vial Coppler.
Yes.
Counselor Vial Real.
Yes.
Counselor Beta.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Lindell.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion has been approved.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sanchez and partner.
My name's Tina.
Little Tina. We heard some other nicknames a little earlier. I'm not going to use any. Thank you. Appreciate you. That brings us then, the item that was pulled by, at the request of Counselor Vial Coppler was item J, which has to do with a notice, a request to publish notice of a public hearing. Do you want to read that for us, Madam Clerk?
Of course. This is request to publish notice of public hearing on December 9th and it's bill number 2020-32. This is an ordinance amending section 14-6.2 of our Santa Fe City Code. To adopt by ordinance, a maximum of 1,000 short-term rental permits in the city to prospectively limit the number of short-term rental permits to one per natural person, to prospectively limit proximity of short-term rental units, to require operator for short-term rental units to adopt record-keeping and recording requirements for short-term rental unit owners and host platforms, and to clarify other provisions of the short-term rental units, amending the land use definitions in section 14-12.1, Santa Fe City Code 1987, as they relate to short-term rental units, and amending section 12-2.3, Santa Fe City Code 1987, to clarify that a short-term rental unit is not a group R1 occupancy for purposes of fire inspections. Eli Isaacson and Sam Pye is available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Counselor Vial Coppler, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't pull this to discuss any of the items therein because we, you know, it's going through committee. We've discussed quite a bit, but why I did pull it was because of the, all the attachments that are listed and for, I know there are a lot of people following this, this, the ordinance changes here. And if, if the public is to look at all the attachments, I just want to point out that the second attachment called short-term rental changes, doc, doc X, is the latest version of the ordinance changes. And while these are not really labeled to say what, you know, necessarily what they really are, it can be a little bit confusing, I think, for the public because it was somewhat hard for me to really rely on what I was looking at. But it was confirmed in Public Works that the second attached item called short-term rental changes is the latest draft. And so if one is looking at where we're at with this, that would be the one to look at. Secondly, I think it's important for the public to know that there are a lot of expected amendments to this. And so as it moves through, I'm not sure where the public will find the amendments, if they'll be added on here and maybe captioned to, a little more succinctly to identify what they are, or where will the, will the public be able to find where the amendments are? I'm not really sure. What I can say right now is when the Public Works Committee reviewed these, we then moved it back to Public Works at the next meeting in November, first meeting in November, but it is going to finance next. So I'm not, and there will be an amendment there that I know of, but it, it can get unwieldy. So my suggestion, first of all, is, is that we let the public know where the latest draft is, which is the second item. And then, and then third, I mean, then secondly, figure out a way from here forward how we can better describe any amendments that come through and where they can be found. I'm assuming, well, I really don't know where they will be found. So I, I'm not sure if the city attorney's Jesse Guillen, maybe, and the city attorney's office can just chime in on, on how we might organize this so that the public can easily follow it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Sally, are you a Jesse or the clerk have a response to the question of the best way for folks to follow the process as it evolves and the amendments as they are proposed and then voted on?
Thank you, Mayor Weber. Counselor Vial Coppler. I'll defer to Mr. Guillen because he is the one that kind of packaged these as the multiple attachments and uploaded them. And he's assured me he'll be adding the amendments to the packet for subsequent meetings. So he is processing those and will add them to Prime Gov. And I'll let him weigh in if he has anything to add about how to make that accessible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The amendments will be added to the packet, just like other attachments for this item. What I can do is make sure that the attachments are added as, starting from the third item down instead of the default, which would be at the very end of the attachment list. So that would make them easily, more easily accessible to the public. So that would end up, so you'd have the memo first, then the, the proposed bill and then any amendments after that. We have three pending amendments at this time. Once Aaron has reviewed and signed them, I will upload them. I anticipate those being available for the finance committee next week. In addition, they will be available on the Legislative Services website, which can be found by going to the, the city's website via the city attorney's page. So they'll be available there as well.
Thank you.
Okay, good enough. That's, that's great. I, I just thought it was important to kind of figure this out for now. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cassidy Sanchez, your hand is up. You have the floor.
Hi, this is actually off topic. Carol Romero-Worth is having a hard time getting in. We've moved on to the next topic before she was back and I wanted to pause and let her come back in so she can weigh in if she needs to.
Boy.
I had her, I had her turn off Zoom and restart. So we're just waiting on her to see if that works.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Thanks for flagging that. I, I assumed she was on a different page and back with us, but that's not the case. Let's get, give her a second to rejoin the meeting. Joe, is there any sign of her coming, coming through?
Yes, I just, I just let her in right now.
Ah, thank you.
Yep, she should be popping up here in about two seconds.
Sorry about that. Don't know what happened.
It's okay. Now you're back. So we, apologies. We had moved, assumed you had rejoined us and moved on to a discussion of the item J that was pulled and Counselor Vial Coppler had raised the question about making sure that the amendments that are in the works would be easily found and accessible to the public. And Jesse had explained where they would be posted and how they would be found. They would be higher up in the order and, and identified as the amendments in the works. So just to catch you up. Are there other questions or comments about this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
I got a motion from Counselor Vial Coppler to approve it and a motion from, or a second from Counselor Mayor Worth. Is there discussion? If there is no discussion, could the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Mayor Worth.
Yes.
Counselor Vial Coppler.
Yes.
Counselor Vial Real.
Yes.
Counselor Beta.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Lindell.
Yes.
Counselor Rivera.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you. That then led us to 11 on our agenda, which is discussion and action items. Clerk, Madam Clerk, do you want to identify 11A for us, please?
Yes, this is a request to publish notice of public hearing for November 10th. This is to solicit public comment on the 2019 through 2020 caper, which is to be submitted to HUD and Alexandra Lad is presenting.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Lad about this item? Is there a motion on this item?
Move to approve.
Wait, I'm sorry. I saw somebody, did somebody hold up a finger that they wanted to ask a question or was it a motion? No, okay. Counselor, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Counselor.
Oh, no, no. I made a motion and so did Sarah. I think that's all I heard.
Okay, Counselor Lindell made a motion. Counselor Vial made the same motion. I assume you guys are, one of you will, you want to be, second by Counselor Lindell to Counselor Vial Real's motion. We're all back on track. Thank you for the help. Is there discussion of the motion? If not, can the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Vial Coppler.
Yes.
Counselor Vial Real.
Yes.
Counselor Beta.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Lindell.
Yes.
Counselor Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Mayor Worth.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion has been approved.
Thank you.
Next item is 11B. This is request for approval of amendment number 10 to Service Contract 18-0552. This is increasing compensation in the amount of $78,692.40 plus Mexico grocery receipts tax. This is for security service, Place Shelter, Salvation Army Shelter, and a number of city parks. And the agreement, the amendment is with Allied Universal Security. We have Sam Brindan presenting.
Thank you. Counselor Vial Coppler, I see your hand is up, so I will recognize you. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, I think I'm understanding this right, but I had some questions about the preparation or, well, preparation of this. Pete's Place is, is not mentioned in the cover memo or in Exhibit A, but it is in the contract, contract amendment, I should say. So, and then it, it speaks of Salvation Army. I guess I, I've not heard of shelters, a Salvation Army shelter. That's just me. So I want clarification on this.
Great, thank you. I appreciate it because Mr. Burnett is here and he may well have, if I'd given him the floor first to have clarified it, but let's focus on those two points initially, Mr. Burnett. And then if you want to broaden the net a little bit and describe more what the item really covers, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, Counselor Vial Coppler, to begin with, my apologies for the oversight. my apologies for the oversight of, um, the language, uh, including Pete's uh, on the cover letter. Uh, that was an omission on my part and error, and I apologize for that. Um, not as an excuse, but just so you understand kind of the lead up to this situation. Um, this amendment originally began as just temporary security services uh, for the parks and then was expanded to include the shelters. And I think in my, uh, haste to try and get everything prepared for uh, originally last week's special session of the governing body, uh, I made that error and again, my apologies. Um, and I apologize, I have also forgotten what your second question was.
I can help you, or Counselor V. Hill Coppler, do you want to?
Well, the, the second thing was I, I, in Exhibit B where, where all the monies are described, you know, the chart, I mean Exhibit A, uh, I don't see Pete's Place in there, but are they sharing the same funding with Salvation Army?
Yes, thank you. Um, correct. And so, uh, that is exactly how we're doing it. So the we have a, we're gonna have a mobile unit that's dedicated to the shelters um, during those, um, hours of the day, and they will essentially move back and forth um, from shelter to shelter, checking kind of the, you know, areas around the shelters and the shelters themselves. So it's a shared service between the two.
Okay, and then I guess I had then three questions. Where is Salvation Army Shelter?
Um, if I remember correctly, it is on, uh, Alameda, um, just east of Saint Francis. Um, I'm trying to think what, uh, there is a, a small kind of, uh, housing development on the corner and about a block or a block and a half towards downtown on the same side of the street is where Salvation Army exists.
I, I know it exists there, but I didn't realize there was a shelter there. But, uh,
I think, I think the count, yeah, the counselor's question earlier was, she really, she hadn't recalled that we were entering into, or there was a shelter proposition being stood up there. You might want to, either you or Regina might want to go back over that ground.
Um, Mayor, uh, Counselor V. Hill Coppler, um, I'd be happy to try to fill in. I think, you know, we're moving these CARES uh, contracts as quickly as we can. Um, and I think i- in this case, the security for the Salvation Army Shelter is beating the contract for the Salvation Army Shelter to you. Um, is that true, Daryl? No? So the Salvation Army Shelter is our cold weather shelter. Um, we, uh, you know, when we have the cold blue days, we need a place to bring, um, people to avoid hypothermia deaths. And so the Salvation Army has actually stepped it to run a shelter all winter long that can bed approximately twenty-five people, um, and will really help out to reduce the hypothermia deaths. So there'll be a contractor for the winter to provide additional beds to, uh, during the cold weather.
Okay, thank you for that because I, I really didn't know that, and that's good to know. Uh, then I, I just wanted to be sure I'm reading this right. So ninety-six thousand, five twenty-nine is for two months only?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselor, um, let me go back. The, the total that I'm seeing is, uh, the, uh, oh yes, thank you. Yes, you are correct. Um, and that includes the shelters and, uh, security for the parks, which is all bundled into one amendment.
Right. And that's only for two months?
Yes, ma'am.
Wow.
The, the parks, uh, the parks were adding, uh, twenty-four hours, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. The shelters are sixteen hours a day, seven days a week. Um, with a vehicle and, uh, a special, uh, smartphone um, in which the, uh, company can track activity that starts actually kind of predicting, uh, where issues may arise and kind of helping, um, the security officers kind of hone in on issues before they, uh, get out of control. Um, so all those things bundled together, the number of hours and, uh, the number of locations, yes, comes up to the ninety-six.
Um, thank you. I, and I have kind of similar questions on the next item, which I won't ask now, but, uh, is this for vehicle rent or are we actually buying vehicles for this company?
Um, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselor V. Hill Coppler, there is a, um, there is a daily charge for vehicles. Um, I believe in this case, it's, uh, six dollars and eighty-one cents a day. I have to go back to the, um, the quote to find that. Um, yes, it is six dollars and eighty-one cents per day for a vehicle, uh, attendant to an office.
Okay, so we're kind of, they're, they're kind of charging rent for a vehicle, not buying one. Yeah, okay. Um, okay, uh, those are my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Cassidy Sanchez, you had your hand up next if you want to, uh, take the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, uh, helpful for me, we kind of skipped the part where Sam gives a little intro. I think you gave a, you just gave us a little bit more of what's changing in terms of the twenty-four hours a day at the parks and six days a week or sixteen hours a day at the shelters. Um, was there any more to just what the difference is between some of the work that we've done with this company in the past?
Um, I, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselor Cassidy Chan- Sanchez, I think um, really beyond the locations themselves, um, we have done all of these. Uh, we have had security with Allied in locations just like this in the past. So it's really just kind of expanding services we've already had, um, in similar fashion. So we don't, we don't expect any major changes to, you know, their performance or the kind of the issues that we'll encounter, uh, during the service.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, and then I know that we're also going to be looking at some of the areas around the shelters. And of course, this was a large topic of conversation that we just had as we were discussing the Pete's Place lease. I'm curious what, um, the area around the shelters, uh, means. You know, how far around the shelters will they go? Will they be going in and out of the neighborhoods? What will this look like?
Good question. Sam, can you give a picture of the scope of the services perhaps?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, again, uh, Counselor Cassidy Chan- Sanchez, um, they will be patrolling the immediate area because, um, they're not the, you know, the Santa Fe Police Department. Um, you know, kind of troll or moving through neighborhoods isn't really what they do, but they will be inspecting or checking on the shelters themselves and then the streets directly around the shelter. I think, uh, Pete's Place is a good example of the type of situation they would, uh, or the areas they would be monitoring. We see a lot of people kind of gathering, kind of within a block of the shelter and, uh, um, you know, kind of, uh, uh, you know, resting or, you know, doing whatever it is they do. So we, those would be kind of the immediate area, you know, within a block. And, uh, I think as they move from one shelter to the next, if they encounter anybody kind of uh, a little farther away than that, they might stop to check in. But really, they're focused on the shelter and kind of within a, you know, the block around it.
Okay, uh, thank you. And so how does the, do we coordinate, have them coordinate with uh, the police department in terms of when, you know, the security is kind of doing their loops, uh, making sure that maybe PD is somewhere else um, as we can have more eyes and more places. Um, as well as if they see a problem, what does the coordination with PD look like?
So the, the, uh, the standard procedure with Allied has kind of been, uh, what they often refer to as observe and report. If there's an issue and there's not an immediate threat to the well-being of an individual or property, um, though they will call the police and they will stay in the area and kind of observe the incident to make sure that it doesn't escalate and allow the police department to come in and, uh, you know, uh, take care of the situation for them.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then my last question, um, you know, going back to the funding, it's for two months. And that primarily has to do with our funding source, which are those CARES dollars. Um, as we just discussed in, in great detail, a lot of times the shelters, um, might be magnets for other individuals who are coming, not necessarily the individuals who are staying in the shelter, but there might be some activity as we'd seen at Pete's. Have we started to look at? Well, sorry, let me don't get ahead of myself. You mentioned that we'll be collecting data through this company that might help us determine what are some of the challenges or trouble spots that we're seeing in the areas as well as the parks? And then have we looked at funding sources beyond December? Um, and being able to continue to hone the service, but also be able to continue it, especially knowing that these cold weather shelters um, will be operating through Marchish.
Um, yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, uh, to answer the first part of your question, we receive um, from Allied, two types of documents. We receive, um, a daily activity report that's just a general summary of everything they did throughout the day. And then we also receive incident reports, which are specific to any, uh, kind of escalated incident. All of these are entered through the program on their smartphone. That's essentially a, a smart database that, uh, um, after a certain amount of time becomes predictive. All of that information can be turned over to the city at any time that we request it, um, either during or after the term of their service. And the second part of your question, to the best of my knowledge, there hasn't been a conversation to date about funding past, um, the end of CARES funding. Um, but I'm sure if that, uh, issue is raised, um, Mrs. Wheeler and, uh, you know, her designees would be happy to look into that if needed.
Okay, thank you so much, Sam. Thank you for bringing this. Um, you know, I do really appreciate that data piece. I think that it'll be good for us to have uh, not just for the shelters, but the parks as well, um, and seeing what is happening there and how we can, uh, make sure that we have safe communities. So those are all my questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. I noticed the city attorney's hand went up. Usually that's a indication that we need to listen to her. Is there something you, you want to bring to our attention at this point before we have? We have s- uh, three other members of the governing body who have their hands up as well.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I did just want to alert the governing body of a concern.
Aaron, Aaron, Darth Vader has joined the conversation. See if you can give us a clear voice connection.
You can continue, Mr. Mayor, and then she'll jump in.
Okay, good. Counselor Garcia, you are next, uh, with your hand up. Do you want to, uh, take the floor, please?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Sam, I got a couple of questions. Um, first being, how are the parks selected that are going to be receiving these security services?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Garcia, um, the parks were, uh, actually brought to me by the, uh, new interim Parks Director, uh, Mrs. McDonald. Um, that said, my understanding and my conversations with her that these parks are those in which the seri- the city has experienced the most ish- issues um, related both to, to homelessness and to kind of unwanted activities. Um, both issues being kind of perceived as, uh, kind of side effects from, uh, kind of social changes related to COVID.
Okay, thank you for that clarification because, uh, you know, we've got close to eighty parks and I was wondering how these ones made their way up to the top. Um, so was, I'm hearing you correctly. Uh, Pete's Place is supposed to receive the same level of support that Salvation Army is, which is sixteen hours a day, seven days a week?
Uh, Counselor, the sixteen hours a day is actually divided between the two shelters. And so there is a, going to be, uh, one officer, uh, like, um, in a mobile unit that will move kind of back and forth between the two locations, uh, checking the locations themselves and then around them. And in that sixteen hours, if one or the other seemed like it needed more attention, they can always, uh, you know, kind of tailor service, uh, moment by moment, day by day, to make sure we're addressing them appropriately.
Okay, um, is there room to move or change the hours of support being given to the communities? Because I, I believe that the shelter should receive the same level of support that the parks are, especially given, you know, the parks after hours and these cold temperatures that, that we're now receiving. Um, is that going to be necessary? I mean, these are questions I don't, I don't know the answers to, but I would, I would want to see this, the shelters and the surrounding communities receive the level of support that the parks do, given that, you know, especially when we're looking at the surrounding community, uh, around Pete's Place. There is a lot of activity, and if we're only going to dedicate roughly eight hours a day for that, um, I, I see a, a bigger need than eight hours a day. Um, so I don't know if there's a, any room for flexibility in modifying the hours of support given. Um, if that raises the cost of the contract, how that might raise it, or if we can do that within the current existing costs. Is there, is there that possibility?
Um, Counselor, y- yeah, the I would have to investigate how that would work. There is a potential we might, because, um, yeah, I would have to investigate to make sure there wouldn't be any contractual conflicts because we've spelled out what hours are dedicated to what particular type of property. If there was flexibility allowed in that, we could, I could have the conversation with Allied and see if it was possible. If there were any sort of, uh, legal, uh, hurdles, it would require two things, us to find an additional source of funding and then processing, uh, an additional contract amendment to adjust the hours specific to the shelter. Um, I, i- in all honesty, I can't answer you directly now, but what I can say is that I can look into it and, uh, determine what our options are. And if you would like, I could provide you with an email, uh, kind of letting you know, um, what I discovered.
Okay, thank you. And if you wouldn't mind just sharing that information with the rest of the governing body. Um, you know, and I guess the follow-up to that is I look at the list of parks and with Franklin Miles being on this list of receiving support and even Herb Martinez, which is, you know, maybe in a tenth of the miles apart from Franklin Miles. So you've got two parks, twenty-four hour service. Um, probably both within a half a mile of Pete's Place. How could we look to, um, make an efficient, uh, security check with that? But you've got three folks. Can they patrol three locations? Um, or can you pull one to go do rounds of, around the Pete's Place area, given it's, it's in the, that proximity? And, and I guess, the, like I said, I don't know, think you know the answers, but that's, that's where just trying to be creative in how we can best utilize these resources. I see that Parks is supposed to start these services now in October, so does that mean they're going to begin tomorrow, given that October, ex- you know, ends in, on Saturday? Um, how, how does that work? Because I see shelters begin services in November, parks in October.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselor Garcia, um, those were our, um, um, uh, ideal dates for starting service. Uh, we will not be able to begin until the contract amendment has been approved by the governing body and then goes through, uh, a few more sta- uh, will gather a few more signatures after this, uh, be submitted to the clerk and recorded and then entered into munis when a purchase order is issued. So, uh, after approval from you, there's probably a two or three day gap while we, uh, kind of finish processing the documents. Um, and then turn that over to the contractor who then, uh, probably will have a one or two week lead time to begin services.
So with that being said, it's probably not likely that we will see these security services be implemented until the middle of November, which is about a month and a half of services. I mean, kind of gets to the point that I think Counselor V. Hill Coppler was trying to make earlier for I mean, kind of gets to the point that I think Counselor B. Hill Copler was trying to make earlier for was, you know, for a month and a half of security services for nearly a hundred thousand dollars, that's that's a good bunch of uh resources that we're we're putting down. And could they best be utilized elsewhere? And I know that CARES Act funding has to be utilized by the end of the year. But is this is this pontifan solely earmarked for security services or could they be used elsewhere? And I think that brings the bigger question for a month and a half of service for ninety-six thousand dollars. Are we really getting the best use of these resources, these taxpayer resources? At I I don't have any additional questions. Thank you, Sam, for the information. Um, I I do think that the community will be appreciative of the security services that will be out. Um, it'll be interesting to see what feedback and data is given. Um, because I I I would assume that once they're out, you're going to hear community members say, I we we like this service and we want to see more of it. Um, but but thank you, Sam. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, City Attorney, you are better mic'd up. Do you want to uh make um take the floor and make the point or advise us of what you were bringing to our attention previously?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Perfectly.
Great. Um, Mr. Mayor, Counselors, uh the city clerk and I just touched base on a technical concern. That's why I disappeared for a brief period of time. Um, it sounds like the agenda number doesn't match the memo numbers. And our agenda is required to put the public on reasonable notice of what the vote will be about. Um, so the governing body can can vote for the amount on the agenda and that's fine. Um, if you want to amend that amount, it's just raising the possibility as to whether or not that is within the reasonable notice that we've given the public. So um that's a judgment call. Um, and I just wanted to alert you to that.
So the amounts don't match?
That is my understanding, yes.
Why don't we take additional up? Sam, you have you have a response?
Yes, um, Mr. Mayor, uh Ms. McSherry. Um, I'm reviewing the documents now and again, I I must apologize. The memo has an incorrect number. The contract itself, the the number on the contract matches the number on the agenda item. I I don't know if that fixes the issue.
Mr. Mayor, uh Mr. Burnett, if if the amount you want is the amount on the agenda, then we are in a perfect place. I I think the clerk was worried that we wanted a different amount. Was that not accurate?
That is, there was an error on the memo only, not on the contract. They match, so it sounds like uh
Okay, then, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Burnett, then it sounds like we're in a in a good position to vote on the agenda item. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for flagging that and for clarifying it. I believe Counselor Rivera has his hand up next. Uh, Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Burnett, when does the two months of service start?
Uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh Counselor Rivera, as soon as we're able to issue a P O to Allied um and they're able to uh bring their additional staff into town or get move them from another location. So again, my my guess would be somewhere between a week and a half and two weeks uh from today.
All right, so why are we doing that at Pete's Pets if our police department has? Committed to to providing services there until February?
Counselor, um, I cannot speak directly to that, but what I can say is um you add the role of allied security is not intended to replace the role that the police department plays, but to support them. Um, and that's uh that's kind of the extent of uh how much I can speak to that question, sir.
All right, so the reason that we're paying for a vehicle then is so that they can travel in between Pete's Place and uh also the um, I guess shelter there in Alameda Salvation Army?
Correct, sir.
All right, and you said that they would uh provide services within a block of each each area. Is that written into the contract or is that your assumption?
That that is uh based on my conversations with the account manager. Um, as we have started to put these together, we've talked about um what they refer to as post orders, which is kind of the procedures that they will give their officers that kind of determine um the patterns or the, you know, the process they'll go through, the services they'll provide us.
So how much authority do they have outside of really the block that or the half block that the that Pete's Place is on and also that Salvation Army is on?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Rivera, I would say they have the the same amount of authority as any other regular citizen, um which would be no more than to be able to uh report an incident to the police. And I think if they felt like it was important to wait and observe the situation until the police were able to arrive, that would be uh that would be the extent of it.
Right, so what level of security officer are we asking to patrol these areas?
Uh, Counselor, the uh the shelters and the parks will receive a a level two officer, which is uh an officer who's trained with um um non-lethal forms of protection like pepper spray and is allowed to carry uh handcuffs and use them in specific situations.
And the contract says that personnel records will be will be made available uh for inspection. Have we done this since this is Amendment Nine to the contract?
Uh, we have not asked for those records, no, sir.
All right, so I'm, I don't know if anyone from PD is on. I'm curious as to how PD and security are both going to handle issues at 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 Pete's Place. Um, and really, if if we're going to have security there, why do we have our PD officers there? I'm sure they could be used at other places.
We have both the Chief and Deputy Chief on the call. Uh, Chief Padilla, do you want to respond to the Counselor's question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Counselors, good evening, good afternoon. Um, yes, very important question. Uh, we're our operation tranquility only goes until January ninth, not until February of twenty twenty-one. So it's literally right around the corner. In our areas of operation and times is nine AM to seven PM. So with this security company being able to be there dedicated, it past those hours definitely helps us and supplements our resources of patrolling in that area. Even if we say on on a on a Monday or a Tuesday or even a Monday that we're going to have two pedal bike officers there, we still have to maintain their police certification, so one of them could be in some type of advanced or in-house training. And then what happens if the other officer makes a major arrest in that area and then they're tied up for two hours or four hours? Or if that officer that's supposed to be there calls in sick that day, or they're just off on some type of vacation or annual leave. Uh, and then we have no one there other than the supervisor doing a little bit of double duty in that area. So by having the security guard and that company there, it's going to help us and supplement our patrol.
So what are your hours of operation for this operation?
Nine AM to seven PM. And then after that, it's up to the area officer that's working either swing shift or graveyard to patrol the area. As we call it, is a closed patrol if time permits or calls for service permit. So we can't always guarantee that a police officer is not going to be busy responding to calls for service. So by having the security guard company there or the guard or officer, whatever their official title is, will help us out greatly.
And Mr. Burnett, what are the hours of operation for security services?
Uh, we've been discussing four PM to eight AM.
All right. Excuse me. So it looks like they're both the the operation by the police department as well as security services are going to end right around the same time, which is January, mid-January, so things will be great during that time. And then after that, no one's going to be around. That that concerns me, so. Um, yeah, I'm I'm not sure why we're doubling up on services, maybe to make sure the whole twenty-four hours is is taken care of, but I'm concerned about what happens after that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Councilman Villarreal, your hand is up. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I share the same concerns um as my colleagues and I had similar questions. And I guess I'm I'm wanting to hear from the chief about how they, if any, and if the um security company actually coordinates with the police department in terms of, yes, we know the hours that everybody's going to be on more or less, but is there a way to actually coordinate? So those overlapping times. Maybe there's, I mean, I know it's all dependent on what's happening, but I just really would like communication to occur with the security department or the security um company in our police department. Is that possible?
Chief, Deputy Chief, can you address the issue of coordination and communication?
Mr. Mayor, uh Counselor Villarreal, I'll I'll defer here to Sam Burnett because he has uh the direct contact and information with the company. But yes, we can probably agree that we can share information and if we see an area or they share and see an area that we can share that information so we can ensure that that proper uh deterrence and area assignment is definitely happening. Sam, what else do you have?
Um, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh Counselor Villarreal, uh Chief Padilla. Um, we do receive the the daily reports from allied security and incident reports. I can have a selected representative from the police department added to the email list so that you guys will be able to see all of those reports, which will keep you up to date on what they're experiencing. And then I can also share contact information um of a chosen representative on your side with the account manager of Allied and vice versa, so that you're able to speak on the phone as well. I think it'll be uh very easy to connect the two groups and to to keep you guys in communication.
Yeah, I think just having conversations to coordinate would be important. I mean, it benefits everybody. It benefits them. I mean, it's really about smart coverage and being efficient and and coordinated. So when they're at the other um shelter at the Salvation Army, which is across town, that there's a way to understand where each other are um are going to be and how to I I just, I just really want them to be able to coordinate. It just doesn't make sense to have somewhat of a duplication of services for this short period of time, and we want to be as efficient as possible. So if you can make sure that the right people get are communicating and connecting, then I think we'll all be better off. Um, in terms of the data collection, does that ever make it to the police department? The data that's collected by the security company?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh Counselor, um to date, I have never turned over any of Allied's uh data to the police department, but if it was ever requested for any reason, uh they would be happy to provide that. So it's not uh it's not a standard process, um but it is available. Should it should it be helpful?
And I guess the question for the chief, would that be helpful, that data?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Villarreal, yes, very helpful and thinking long term. Um, like I said, the police department is always that short-term fix. Go in there, stir things up and hopefully refer some of these individuals to other programs like with Mijo or the Thrive Program. And but yes, it's right around the corner. Um, we're already planning obviously spring summertime events into next year. But I think we can all agree through the Health and Safety Department that we can identify funding to maintain these efforts once this contract is over and done with and hopefully carried off, uh maybe with reduced services or hours. Because in a in a perfect world, that the area in and around Pete's Place will mellow out and will help some people out. And people that are hanging around that area, uh disrupting the residents or the businesses there will know that they can no longer do what they're doing and give that uh area a little bit of a breathing room and and peace. But hopefully that we can all agree, and I know it's a different topic, but I'll throw it out there, that we all agree that this is very, very important to Pete's Place and keeping uh those clients there healthy and safe and then those residents. So I think we can all agree that we can all probably come together and find some funding between January and the rest of the fiscal year till June thirtieth, so we can maintain some type of uh security presence, either security guard or officer, whatever their official title is, but I'm all for it.
Yes, I think that commitment is needed because after January, then I don't want us to fall back into what we've already been experiencing. Um, and the other question about the billing or the amount, so it looks like the contract is actually for seventy-eight thousand. Sam, is that correct? Seventy-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-two, not the ninety-six thousand that we were initially talking about?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Villarreal, that is correct, and my apologies for the error.
But that's for two months, correct?
Correct, and I think it's an important point. Um, when I uh create a contract, I need to ensure the contract covers the total scope of services we're hoping to obtain. But because this process has taken longer than anticipated, we will only pay them for hours actually worked. And that amount will actually go down to reflect the services we we actually receive.
Okay, so that's it's a possibility. We actually won't spend the seventy-eight thousand and and we shouldn't if they don't end up actually doing two full months of service. So if there's a leftover balance, what happens to that amount since it's CARES Act money?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Villarreal, my understanding is that the money we are spending now is is directly tied to CARES. And once uh the ability to seek um reimbursements disappears, so too does the ability to spend that money. Uh, I I assume that there is ways to find sources of money beyond uh the end of December, but I defer to um Mrs. Wheeler and uh, you know, the finance department to work out those details.
Is there someone that can answer that then, if there's a some kind of clause with the CARES Act, if we're in the middle of a contract that it continues into the next year or no?
Let me see if I can make, I I can't guarantee you this is correct, uh Councilwoman, but I think it is close to correct. I think what will be happening with all of our CARES spending, which we're monitoring now uh as the contracts move out, we'll continue to look at the rate at which the dollars are spent. And as was requested earlier from Counselor Lindell, the uh tasks that are accomplished with that spending. And we do have the ability, we'll we will um in probably we will be bringing back through uh the governing body adjustments. We would reclaim money or reprogram money, bring it back for a vote uh by the governing body to say money that had been initially allocated for whatever project or whatever contract, if it is unable to be spent. Uh, before we lose it, we would reprogram it and try to put it into a a different um acceptable and approved uh uh project and then reprogram it for you. So we we either we're, we are very much aware that we either use it or lose it. Uh, we're not going to waste it if there's not hours to be to be utilized with this particular contract. Rather than just either burn the money gratuitously or or lose it by not reprogramming it. As we look at the hours and keep a tab on it, uh we would be able to bring money back for reprogramming through the governing body and apply it in other uh categories.
Okay, I guess I'm still wondering about the ones that are mid-contract that we still have a purpose for, yet they haven't completed the contract time period, that that somehow can still be used for that purpose into the to into the next year?
No, that's not allowed.
Okay.
It is, it very much is a deadline, and we've asked, I think the question is a very a a good one. We've asked both the uh at the state level and asked for guidance from the federal level as to whether there is a likelihood that CARES funding would be extended and the deadlines would change. And at the moment, uh the answer is no. Uh, there it is a December thirtieth uh expiration.
Okay, well, as long as just because we need to use it before we lose it, we shouldn't have contracts like this and have expectations of companies not doing the of companies not doing the the work they're supposed to um for the time period. So Sam, can you just make sure that is the case um that they get? They bill us accordingly and it probably won't be this amount because of the time period. And I also want to stress uh that my colleague, um, Counselor Garcia also said that I really just want us to um make sure that that the company knows that it's required of them to be as efficient with their time as possible, which means if they're near a park, go to the park. If it's near the shelter, then make it make the trips worthwhile. I just think that that makes sense. If they don't follow that, then I don't, I don't know why. I mean, we'd be spending an amounts of money that we don't need to. So I just want to make sure that they know that, Sam, that you can express that to them that this is required of them.
Absolutely. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Villarreal, I will absolutely make that clear to them. And in my experience working with Allied over the last year and a half, two years, they have really been exceptional and uh I have great faith in their ability to do the job well and very efficiently.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. That's all I have.
You did. Counselor Villa Copley, you have the floor again.
Just a, thank you, Mayor, just to be fairly quick. I wanted to say that I support uh having the company uh spend time reviewing the parks and and not necessarily so much time at the shelters primarily because of uh what has already been said that the police department does uh do some drive-bys and now they're actually patrolling and and I think some of that, if I'm not mistaken, is on bike bicycle. So but I'll refer back to the ride around I took in the in the winter last year. And uh, we did go to several parks and you'd be surprised, uh, the shenanigans that go on in the very cold. And uh, when when people in their right minds wouldn't be using the parks. So I think we need to keep a handle on that, and uh I support that that we're using these monies of uh, spending it on this agency to patrol the parks because there there's a lot of stuff that goes down there. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Cassidy Sanchez, your hand is up.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would, I would echo what my uh co-district four counselor stated, um, both uh Herb Martinez and General Miles are parks that uh we frequently hear about things happening in, so um I I understand why those were targeted and I am very glad that they are. Um, I also did wanted to bring up uh what Counselor Villarreal did regarding the um use it or lose it to make sure that, you know, especially since this is starting later, we are really keeping an eye on this and and coming back with it. Um, the other piece is a technical issue um on page five of the packet, it's page two of the contract. Um, the the dollars don't line up, so the written-out dollar amount says for nine hundred seventy-four thousand three hundred forty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents, and then in parentheses, we have the seventy-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-two forty cents. So I just want to make sure that that is consistent across the board so that we are all understanding that it is the seventy-eight thousand amount that we are going with. Correct?
Sam? Is that right?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, Counselor, uh, you are correct. Those numbers should match. And uh, they will match before it uh proceeds for any more signatures. Thank you.
Of course, perfect. Thank you so much for uh for fixing those. Um, and that was all. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Other comments or questions? If not, is there a motion?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I I would move the approval, but can somebody give me, what's the amount with that we're really working with? Because I think it needs to be part of the motion since there's so many different amounts floating.
It's the amount in the title.
Yes, that's seventy-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty cents.
I would move that amount that we approve this item.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second from Counselor Villa Copley. Is there any further discussion? If not, could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Beta?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor O'Meara Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Villa Copley?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. I think um I think you were taking notes of some of the considerations that folks have identified in terms of overlap redundancy, prorating the service against the actual amount that we will be purchasing. Um, all of which are worthwhile things to keep track of and uh get the contract moving forward with correct numbers in the body as well as on the title. Thank you, everybody. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you read the next item, please?
Yes, this is request for approval of amendment number eleven. This is to service contract eighteen dash zero five five two, increasing compensation in the amount of one hundred and seventy-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and eight cents plus New Mexico grocery receipts tax for security services on the Santa Fe Plaza. This agreement and amendment are with Allied Universal Security, and again, we have Sam Burnett presenting.
Uh, Mr. Burnett, we also have uh representatives, we have the chief, deputy chief, do you want to uh do what we didn't do last time? Give us an overview of what this uh would provide, and then if the police want to speak to the uh again, issues of coordination, communication, uh, they can do that as well.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Um, amendment number eleven will provide uh twenty-four-hour security seven days a week on the Santa Fe Plaza, so on the plaza proper. Um, you know, the uh portals and streets surrounding the plaza. Um, again, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. Um, we're working to uh set up kind of a uh a break room uh for security that will be in the Old Water Street uh ticket booth. Um, so there will be a little bit of uh um extended services down in that direction as they, you know, move uh back and forth. But this is really focused primarily on the plaza itself. And uh, again, the areas directly around it.
Thank you. Uh, Chief, Deputy Chief, are there uh comments you want to make to introduce this item about the uh services and coordination between the uh contractor and the uh police department?
Sorry, jumping in here. Um, I think the chief's having some technical issues on on his end. Uh, I I'm on board with this um this moving forward. I I think that's a great idea. And it'll be helpful to to again have the eyes on. We've had the the bike officers, bicycle officers on the plaza for uh several months now, going back to um believe February, March of twenty twenty uh in the downtown area. And as the chief mentioned before, their current schedule is from nine in the morning until seven in the evening. And so um, yeah, after that time and before then, it's up to the area officer for the, for us, it's considered area nine of the ten areas for the city. Uh, so it's up to the area nine officers to maintain and and keep presence there uh on top of their general calls for service and responding to other areas um in the north uh side of town. So uh, I think this is a, this is a great idea. Uh, I, we're in support of it.
Thank you. Uh, questions from the governing body for either Mr. Burnett or uh Deputy Chief? Uh, Counselor Garcia, your hand is up. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Sam, so I see that or can you clarify for me? You know, because I know we just approved the amendment that has a level-two officer. This amendment deals with the levels-three officer, which I'm assuming carries a bit more. Um, I don't know. And so I'd like to get some clarification on on level-three officer versus a level-two. And um, let me, let me start there.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselor Garcia, a level-three officer is a uh uh carries a firearm and uh is fully trained and certified to do so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Sam. And so does this contract entail having one person on duty, or is it multiple people?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Garcia, this is for one uh one officer um only uh twenty-four hours a day.
Okay, um I I guess I'm, my question is, you know, is it worth our investment? How much, you know, in regards to the level three versus level-two, because we just approved an amendment that had a level-two officer that had eight different locations for twenty-four-hour service um at half the cost roughly. I mean, you, if you add in the two shelters, that's ten, ten security officers for roughly half the cost. And so my question would be, why wouldn't we look at that route in regards to having more security presence? And I'm not saying let's bombard downtown with 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 lots and lots of security officers, but I'm asking, my question is, why was the decision made to go with uh a security officer that carries a firearm where we couldn't only put one on the ground, whereas if we went with the level-two, we can put according to what we just approved, ten times the amount on the ground. Um, and given with our, you know, the proximity that the our police officers should be in the downtown area and their license to carry their firearms, are we making the right choice?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Garcia, um, let me provide you just a a little bit of background so you understand um clearly the situation. So uh for amendment ten, uh, the the parks portion of that is uh uh seven days a week, uh twenty-four hours a day. That's one guard in a mobile unit who travels between the parks and will have a standard path where he, you know, arrives at a park, gets out, checks on certain locations, gets back in his vehicle and moves on to the next location. Um, and that is the same with the shelter. So that rather than, I don't want you to come away from this thinking we're going to have uh eleven or twelve guards. That's really two guards, um, one for the shelter, one for the parks. That contract, because it's CARES funding, um, as was discussed, is for two months. This particular contract um is set up to run for the entire fiscal year. So its expiration date is set at uh June thirtieth uh twenty twenty-one. So you have both. Um, you do have a difference in the cost associated with the type of guard, but it's also a considerably longer um uh service, uh time of service than the parks and uh um shelter ki- uh portion of the contract.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Not sure I've answered all of your questions. Please let me know if I missed any.
You did. Thank you for clarifying. I really appreciate that. So it's, in essence, with amendment ten, we're putting two officers on the security officers on the ground. One is going to be assigned to patrolling eight locations. One is going to be assigned to patrolling two locations. Um, so so thank you for that. Just to clarify this, these resources are not CARES Act funding, is not CARES Act.
No, sir. Uh, Mr. Counselor, no, they are not.
Okay, great. Um, I guess the only, the next question I had was in this amendment, is it, do I, am I reading it correctly that we've got a twenty-five-thousand-dollar overrun with this? And why that amount? That's a it's a pretty significant amount and and I know that if I was a business owner and I had twenty-five thousand dollars out there to say, hey, look, we can with the, the, the city has a buffer, you know, they've got a cushion of twenty-five K that we can dip into. Um, I'm not saying that they're going to do that, but why, why did we settle on twenty-five thousand? I would think, you know, a a smaller amount would be sufficient in the sense that if we run into a challenge that where we do have an overrun, we can bring that before the governing body or the city manager, whomever it may be, to make the appropriate necessary changes. So I guess, why did we settle on twenty-five K?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselor Garcia, um, the the uh, just another piece of background, the original contract or when I, actually, when I took over managing this contract about a year ago, I think it was with amendment number nine was the first time um that we built in a cost overrun. It was initially twenty-five thousand dollars. We used a significant portion of that uh when we set up the shelter at Midtown Campus. Uh, we opened a PO specific to that shelter where Allied was providing a security support to help kind of keep things in line over there. And so uh, you know, we, we held on to that money for a considerable amount of time. The contractor wasn't able to spend it um, you know, haphazardly. It really had to come directly from a request from the city and had to have attached to it a PO that goes through an approval process guaranteeing, you know, we're, you know, we're adhering to procurement and uh we are not uh negligently spending um city or taxpayer money. Um, because we depleted the majority of that in the past, as I've mentioned, um, because I was processing another amendment and I knew that uh having this additional uh amount available in case of an emergency, it seemed like an an ideal time to essentially replenish that fund um in case something comes up in the future.
Okay, so that fund was dipped into not by the company, but elsewhere in the department?
That that was by.
That that was earmarked for that potential resources?
Exactly.
Okay, uh, and and so we've never had any unforeseen cost overruns as far as we've had this contract?
Beyond, uh, Mr. Counselor, beyond that one um incident, no, we have not.
Okay. Um, I guess maybe, you know, if we get into an amendment eleven, maybe we should rethink that twenty-five thousand, because that's, that's a high amount. Um, I think, should there be any unforeseen cost overruns? That's where we I would hope that the security firm would work with us and say, hey, look, you're, you're getting ready to pass a threshold that you're going to have an overrun. Um, and and in the instance, I I can't think of where we would have a twenty-five-thousand-dollar overrun. Um, just food for thought. Uh, that's all the questions I have, Mr. Mayor, and thank you again, Sam, for all the clarification. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilwoman Villarreal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, Sam, for this contract. If um, since it's through June of next year and there is a need to shift this person to not just um oversee plaza security, can we amend the contract? To do another?
Mr. Mayor, um, Counselor Villarreal, absolutely. At any time, if we feel like um the scope of services are not appropriate to our needs, um, we're able to both amend the contract to to alter the services they're providing. Um, we're also able to, at any time, make the determination that uh, we're not being served by security on the plaza. We can provide notice to Allied and they would pull that officer for us. So we have a fair amount of flexibility. Um, the process of getting through, you know, legal review and finance review and then um committee and council can take some time. So uh, changes to scope are not always instantaneous, but they're uh one hundred percent doable.
Okay, so if there's a possibility for part of the twenty-four-hour period to be somewhere else in addition to the plaza, like separate the day and go to another location, say like Pete's Place, and then also cover the plaza, is that possible?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Villarreal, uh, this is similar to a question that came up on amendment ten, and I would have to check with the legal department on the specifics of how kind of altering uh the scope that's included in a contract works. Allied would be more than happy to do it. I would just need to ensure that kind of changing their, essentially their behavior um and making it contrary to what's in the contract doesn't cause any legal or procurement problems for us. If that's the case, that it's not going to, um, Allied would be more than happy to accommodate us um as they always have been.
Okay, does, um, Director or Attorney McSherry have a, any insight to that?
Aaron, is there a legal opinion on the fly here?
Mayor Weber, Counselor Villarreal, it does depend on the specific contract and how it was procured and what the original scope looked like when it was procured. But in this case, it sounds like you're talking about things that are already in the scope. So we could amend the scope, but if it's going to be contrary to the current scope, we would need a formal amendment.
Okay, just checking if we need to do that next year, that's all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Other questions or comments for, uh, either Chief, Deputy Chief or Mr. Burnett? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Counselor Romero Worth to approve this and a second from Counselor Vihil Koppler. Any further discussion? If not, could the clerk please call the roll?
Councilor Beeta?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor, excuse me, Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Romero Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Koppler?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Mr. Burnett, thank you for being with us and for being so, uh, full of good information and, uh, being able to respond to those questions. Very, very grateful for your, your hard work, thank you.
Very welcome, thank you all.
Uh, that brings us, uh, Madam Clerk to item number 12, if I'm correct.
That's correct, that's matters from the city manager.
City Manager, do you have matters?
Good evening, uh, members of the governing body, uh, just two quick items. One, um, wanted to give a shout out to our Public Works, uh, snow cruise yesterday, our first winter storm of the season. As, as the one making the, a call, I appreciated the early, um, our ability to call it early on, uh, Monday night. But kudos, kudos to the whole team, Tomas, his crew, Regina. The snow plan, I think, is a really clear way to show how we're doing it. Um, and we're going to always get better at our communication, but I think, um, given where we are, being in mostly remote, but we've still got a lot of people coming in, uh, different locations. I just really wanted to acknowledge that. Um, and always stand open for feedback, uh, as you hear, uh, from constituents and otherwise. But, um, from our perspective, I think, really wanted to appreciate our crews on, on 24 hour rotation, um, and otherwise. And the only other thing I wanted to, uh, acknowledge is, um, of course, next Tuesday is Election Day. Per the calendar that was approved by the governing body last year, city, uh, will, offices will, those that are open, but city, uh, will close at noon, uh, much like Fiesta Friday and others, uh, that is to, um, uh, to encourage our, uh, allow our employees to vote, um, but to, so city, um, resources are closed Tuesday as of noon. And those are my only matters, thank you so much.
Thank you, City Manager. Matters from the City Attorney is item number 13 on the agenda.
Yes, Mayor Weber, members of the governing body. Um, I do have two matters under executive session. I'd like to recommend that we do go into executive session to discuss pending or threatened litigation and the sale of property, which are under Parts H7 and H8 of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. Specifically, we'll do a quarterly update on pending or threatened litigation, including the case City of Santa Fe versus Purdue Pharma, the City of Albuquerque et al. versus the New Mexico Tax and Revenue Department, and the city versus Tyrone Martin. Um, and in relation to the, um, sale of property, we'd like to discuss the Santa Fe Estates property, Santa Fe Clay Building at the rail yard and the Boys and Girls Club Building located at 730 Alto Street.
And Mr. Mayor, uh, I just wanted to disclose that I will be recusing myself from the portion of executive session that discusses the Boys and Girls Club Building located at 730 Alto Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Rivera, is there a motion?
Yeah, before I do that, can I ask, uh, and, you know, uh, I think I'm doing this just because I think there's more people on right now, but ask the city manager to make the executive decision to allow, uh, free bus service on Election Day. I think we've done this in the past, um, to allow people access to voting sites, um, without, uh, having to pay bus service. So if she can look into that, I would appreciate it. And I, I think, uh, again, bringing this just forward now, because I, I think more people are on right now than will be on later.
Good, good, good suggestion, Counselor, thank you for that.
Thank you, uh, with that, I'll move that we move into executive session to discuss the matters listed on the agenda as recommended by the city attorney.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez has seconded Counselor Rivera's motion, is there a discussion? Could the clerk call the roll, please?
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Romero Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Koppler?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Beeta?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you, so we will move now to a different Zoom meeting. Joe, is it possible to send out that, um, invitation again, so it's at the top of everybody's mailbox?
Um, I don't know if I have access to it, Mayor, I will, I will see what I can do, sir.
Okay, thank you, if anybody has a problem, please call in.
Okay.
Apologies to everyone who has been waiting. I know we are about an hour forty-five minutes behind schedule. We are now streaming live on YouTube again, and the governing body is reconvening in our original Zoom session. So I think, um, I think we're, let's see, there's our city clerk, our city attorney. I think we're back again. Apologies for our lengthy executive session. We're about an hour and forty-five minutes off schedule, and I'm very sorry for that for those of you who have been waiting. We're now streaming live on YouTube again. Council Rivera, would you like to bring us back from the executive session, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion that we return from executive session stating for the record that items discussed were limited to those that were on the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Council Cassidy Sanchez seconded Council Rivera's motion. If there's no discussion, would the clerk please call the roll on that motion?
Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Lindell?
Yes.
Council Rivera?
Yes.
Council Malworth?
Yes.
Council Viel Poplar?
Yes.
Council Viavial?
Yes.
Council Beta?
Yes.
Council Cassidy Sanchez?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is approved.
Now, is there a motion to amend the order of business so we can listen to residents who have been waiting in the, for their turn to speak from petitions from the floor?
And I'll make a motion that we suspend the rest of the afternoon session and go directly into the evening session, and then come back to the afternoon session at the end.
Second. We have a motion and a second to move to the evening session and delay the remainder of the afternoon session until the end. There's a motion, there's a second. Is there a discussion? Could the clerk please call the roll on that motion?
Council Lindell?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Council Malworth?
Yes.
Council Viel Poplar?
Yes.
Council Viavial?
Yes.
Council Beta?
Yes.
Council Cassidy Sanchez?
Yes.
Council Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved.
Thank you. With that, then, we will move immediately to petitions from the floor and ask anyone who, if you want to address the public hearing that is later on this agenda, which has to do with no-knock warrants, this is not the time to speak. But if you have a petition on another matter or something you wish to call to the attention of the governing body unrelated to that public hearing, this is the time to speak. And we'll give everybody two minutes who is in the attendee room, who wishes to speak to something unrelated to that upcoming public hearing. And hands are up, and I think, Joe, you or somebody can control the, the entrance of people into the opportunity to speak for two minutes.
Yes, sir, Mayor Weber.
Thank you.
Here we go. Our first speaker is Lydia Clark. And Lydia, you have been unmuted and may proclaim your petition.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor, city councilors. My name is Lydia Clark. I live at twelve-ten Vitality Street in District One of Santa Fe. There's a great concern from this community in northern New Mexico regarding any participation with organizations or agencies involved in projects for production or use of nuclear weapons, specifically the plutonium pit production mission at Los Alamos National Lab, LANL, which Lisa Gordon Hagerty, the administrator of the National Nuclear Security Administration, NNSA, has stated is the primary mission of LANL. The recent decision from the Department of Energy and NNSA negating a new site-wide environmental impact statement leaves Santa Fe and the entire region completely vulnerable to this massive expansion. The cities and state of New Mexico waited too long to voice any opposition. LANL will be the new Rocky Flats, a plutonium pit factory which devastated Colorado, a production facility that will produce nothing of value, no benefit to New Mexico. Santa Fe has a longstanding policy of resolutions supporting nuclear disarmament, environmental impact statements, and opposing production of nuclear weapons. We ask you once more to create new resolutions opposing the current mission at LANL for nuclear weapons production and provide the necessary protections for this city, northern New Mexico, and the state. Is the city of Santa Fe going to ignore this very dangerous and risky mission by LANL? Will we be once again too late to have a say in what happens to our city? We can be leaders in sustainable energy, community agriculture programs, affordable housing, water conservation, and sustainable jobs, taking our city and state out of poverty, poor education and health care, but not through weapons production. Mayor and city councilors, provide the protections we need now before the bomb drops on us. Do not allow us to become a nuclear colony. Stop participating in the regional coalition for LANL communities. We are not a LANL community. You gave them $20,000 for membership just recently. Maybe part of that was to make up for the previous year, but we don't participate. These are ineffective programs. Stop recruiting and offering training to our youth to participate in nuclear weapons production. This is not sustainable. They produce, it will produce nothing of value. Stand up and protect us now, city councilors and mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Clark, are you going to be speaking to any other matter tonight, any other item?
On this, you know, I kind of, you know, I wanted to speak earlier. I would like to ask during the consent calendar, is there a way to actually speak or is it just by written statement only?
It's written statement, ma'am.
Well, I have to tell you that I'm very disappointed that we're, you know, almost two hours behind, and it feels like you're ignoring the public. And I don't think that this form of democracy is working very well right now. I think that you're not letting the public have enough input.
I think we're all very apologetic about being two hours late. You're absolutely right. Joe?
Okay, next up is, uh, is Ms. Benignato? Let me unmute her.
Good evening.
Uh, Ms. Benignato, are you going to speak to any other item tonight?
I think item two I'm going to speak to.
Okay, all right, great. I won't remove you from the meeting then afterwards, and you go ahead.
Okay, so I agree with Lydia Clark about not having any more pit production up there. We don't need more weapons. And I also agree about what feels like lack of transparency and public participation. And I wanted to bring that up with the zoning issues that you resolved last Thursday at six o'clock, when, again, this is not a normal meeting. when, again, this is not a normal meeting. Those were not really needed to be hurried through. They could have been at any regular meeting, and it wasn't that long, three of them, whatever, that they couldn't have been done at the end of a, like, at the seven o'clock session, or excuse me, six o'clock session, like, tonight. And the other thing is, when you ask for public records and you're told somebody's resigned, they gave the resignation to the mayor, but there's no resignation to, at the mayor's office, there's no resignation at Human Resources, you again feel like there's lack of transparency, and, you know, why is the big question always the course? The other thing is, when you close for two hours, which is really in terms of the wreck of facilities unheard of to do a two-hour closing, they would always open in the mornings, and people were there, and people would get or would use them. So a two-hour closing, opening at ten o'clock, means that actually the first use of the facility is at eleven o'clock in the morning, given that we're now at 25% capacity, and we're not even having the normal amount of hours that we had before COVID. It really reduces the amount of ability to go there. And then the other question I have is, why are we keep recycling people through the historic preservation division? So we had Ms. Roach work there for a while, then she went and she was being a realtor, then she came back for a couple of years. She's the one who just resigned. Now we have Nicole, who worked there about two years ago and is now in California, but she's been hired as the emergency liaison. To do what exactly? I'm not sure. I asked last night. I heard about her, but I never really got an answer as to what, why an emergency and what kind of liaison is she. So those are only, you know, a certain very small person, people who could actually be qualified to work at the city of Santa Fe. And I have a feeling there's a whole lot more people out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, next up is Lee Taylor. And Lee, you are unmuted.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city councilors. My name's Lee Romero Taylor, and I'm the head coach of Santa Fe Aquatic Club. I was born and raised in Santa Fe, and that's why I'm here throughout my youth. Despite being an average swimmer, the involvement with the sport changed the course of my life and has brought about so many positives that I moved back here after college and wanted to give back to my hometown what it gave to me. Santa Fe Aquatic Club, which I now coach, is a community swim team for both kids and adults. Our home pool, the Chavez Center, lies within District Four, but our membership encompasses all districts. Prior to COVID, we numbered close to 100 total members. Due to the initial COVID restrictions, when the pool reopened, we had to scale back to 50 swimmers per week. Now, due to the city's interpretation of the new public health order released on October 16th, we can only provide services to 20 people per week at most, and only four swimmers at a time. This is not sustainable for our business, and it is hurting our kids. We request that the city review the public health order and treat swim teams as close contact businesses as the rest of the state seems to have done. If this is not viable, then we request the public health order be amended to take into account the size of swimming facilities. For example, according to the city's interpretation, the Chavez Center, which is an Olympic-sized swimming pool with 17 lanes, will have the same pool restrictions as Fort Marcy, which I believe has six lanes. The public health order, as it's been interpreted by the city, is having a detrimental effect mentally, emotionally, and physically on not just our membership, but the swimming community of Santa Fe as a whole. I will now read some letters from four of our swimmers highlighting this. The first is from Ella. Ella says, "I'm a sophomore at Santa Fe High, and SFAC is a very important part of my life. The COVID regulations and my inability to swim is affecting me greatly physically and emotionally. Please get us back in the water." Marie is next. She's eight years old. She says, "I want to spend more time at the pool because I like to get better at my swimming skills and learning new things and persevering on things I can't get." Then Liliana, who's seven, says, "I miss swimming because it's one of the few activities that I get to do in person. I miss seeing my friends and teammates." Finally, Sarah, who's six, says, "I want to spend more time at the pool. It's because it's fun to swim, and it helps me with exercise. I appreciate you all allowing me to speak today, and we look forward to more discussion with the city. Thank you."
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Taylor, will you be speaking on any other item tonight?
I will not be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Benji Bonet. Mr. Bonet, you are unmuted.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. My name is Benji Bonet. I'm a resident of Santa Fe, and I strongly urge the city council to make a resolution against plutonium pit production at the Los Alamos National Laboratory and to make it a priority. I remind the council that three current members have already passed a resolution, number 201780, regarding the president's ability to launch a first strike without congressional authorization. And this resolution stands against the expansion of our national nuclear arsenal. Furthermore, the governing body of the city of Santa Fe added its name to, quote, "growing list of cities and college campuses that refuse to be complicit in administration's domestic proliferation of nuclear weapons," end quote. So I call upon councilors Villarreal, Lindell, and Rivera, who were the ones who are current, who passed that resolution in 2017. The citizens of Santa Fe and northern New Mexico need you to reclaim this leadership on this urgent matter, along with the rest of the new council members. I believe strongly that nuclear weapons are an affront to all of humanity. They're exceedingly toxic to our beautiful Mexican peoples and landscape. We cannot be the place where these triggers to these weapons are produced. Thank you for my, for the time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bonet, are you going to be speaking to any other item tonight?
That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Catherine Shera. And Catherine, will you be speaking to any other item besides petitions from the floor tonight? Ms. Shera?
Good evening.
Yes, Ms. Shera, will you be speaking to any other items tonight besides this one? Okay, you are, you can go ahead and go.
Hi, good evening. My name is Catherine Shera. I live at 1018 and a half Sea Canyon Road in Santa Fe. I also would like to register a comment on the planned expansion of plutonium pit production at LANL. It must be recognized by all who are complicit with this expansion that the detonation, whether deliberate or accidental, of less than 1% of nuclear weapons already in existence would lead to the deaths of an estimated 2 billion people from starvation in an ensuing global nuclear famine. Beyond ignoring the fundamental threat that nuclear weapons pose to humanity, many who have advocated for expanded pit production at LANL have glossed over the well-documented risks of industrial pit production to local workers, citizens, and the environment. Instead, they have argued with single-minded emphasis on perceived benefit to the New Mexico economy. Yet, in examination of socioeconomic inequalities in northern New Mexico, including enormous and growing differentials in wealth between Los Alamos and surrounding counties, call these tired arguments about regional economic strength into serious question. And when we finally come to consider a nuclear weapons production economy from a moral perspective, I can only wonder, could there be a human economy more impoverished than one that actively cultivates the capacity to destroy life on Earth? I do not accept modernization of the nuclear arsenal as a pillar of our regional economy. I do not consent to New Mexico's playing a role in triggering a new nuclear arms race. I strongly urge the Santa Fe City Council to pass resolutions to oppose, first, the expansion of pit production at LANL, and, second, any participation by the city of Santa Fe with entities engaged in the production of nuclear weapons. Thank you very much for your attention.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, next up is William Bruce. Mr. Bruce, will you be speaking to any other item besides petitions from the floor?
No, I won't.
Okay, go ahead and continue then.
Good evening, Mayor Weber and councilmen and women. I also wanted to speak about my concerns about the expansion of LANL to become a plutonium pit factory. And, boy, we just heard a very eloquent talk on the matter. I've done some looking into what happened up at Rocky Flats. You know, it's, plutonium pit production is a very, very messy job. You're not only dealing with radioactive materials, some of which are with us for 24,000 years, but also chemical, toxic chemicals that they use, like solvents to clean the machinery and stuff like that. Millions of gallons of it was dumped in Rocky Flats, and it's, it's like every year, millions of gallons will be produced, and we're going to have to deal with those toxic wastes, those nuclear radioactive wastes. They've promised to clean up LANL, and they haven't done it. You know, we have 20,000 some odd drums sitting on the hill up there, radioactive waste. Invulnerable situation. And they're asking us to just put that on hold and start producing more waste and more. It just becomes an incredible recipe for catastrophe in my book. And I think we should all just say absolutely no to the DOE and do whatever we can, you know, keep our youth from becoming nuclear weapons technicians, keep our brightest minds from continuing this insane march to oblivion, you know? I mean, we need these people to help pull out of...
Thank you, sir. We appreciate the message in your, the two minutes did expire. Are there others, Joe, at this time?
Emily Keltenbach, she doesn't have her hand up, but can we go ahead and just check to see if she wants to speak?
I have a feeling she might be here for the public hearing.
Okay. Do you want me to ask, or should we just?
No, be my, by all means. I don't, I might, I have to renew my psychic hotline license. You should ask her.
Uh, Ms. Keltenbach, are you here to speak to petitions from the floor or for the item that's coming up?
Good evening. Thank you. The item that's coming up.
Okay, we'll be getting back to you then when it, when it comes, when we're on that item. Thank you.
Okay, and so that, that concludes the petitions from the floor. Madam Clerk, item 18?
Yes, sir. Item 18 is for the Water Conservation Committee. This would be Scott Bunton. He has water-related technical expertise. He's a reappointment with a term ending July of 2022. Kent Kirk, he's a Santa Fe County resident and has expertise in hydrology. He had a reappointment term ending 7 of 2022. Stephen Smelling, he is building construction practices. Reappointment term ending 7, 2022. Peggy Wright, landscaping water conservation practices. Reappointment term ending July 2022. Robert Combe, education programs. Reappointment term ending July 2022.
Councilor Mayor Worth, do you want to say, speak to this item?
Sure, Mayor. I would just say that these one, two, three, four, five reappointments, these are all very active members of the Water Conservation Committee. They have been instrumental in many of the things that the work of that committee, they've been instrumental in the work of that committee, and we're just asking that they be reappointed.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Move to approve.
There's a motion, motion from Councilor Vial Poplar to approve these appointments, with a second from Councilor Lindell. Is there a discussion? Council Villarreal?
I just have a quick question. How many members sit on this committee again, total?
Uh, I want to say 10 maybe, but don't quote me.
Two, three, four, five.
It's, we just passed, we just passed a, the, the enabling legislation on this, and I can't remember.
So with these appointments, what's the demographics of the makeup of the committee?
Can't speak to that either. I think we have been working really hard to make sure that we have representation from all the districts, and I can get back to you about specifically where, where they are, but that is something that we pay attention to, and we make every effort to make sure we have members to the extent that people apply from, from across the city and all the districts.
Yeah, I'd like to know about the district representation, but I'm talking more about the gender balance because it sounds like from this reappointment, there's mostly men, and I was just curious how many women served on it.
That is also something, since I became chair, that I think when I arrived, I was the second woman in the room. And now I want to say we have one, two, three, four, possibly four to five members who are women, and that is also something that I have concentrated on.
Good to know. So after this appointment, it'll be five and five, I think, balance?
Yeah, again, happy to get back to you with...
Yeah, let me know. I'm just curious and just something you all know that I think is important about gender balance and ethnic balance and making sure our districts are represented. That's all.
I completely agree and have been working to the extent we can to improve all of that. Completely agree.
Thank you. Other comments or questions at this time? If not, can we call the roll, please?
Yes. Council Rivera?
Yes.
Council Malworth?
Yes.
Council Vial Poplar?
Yes.
Council Villarreal?
Yes.
Council Beta?
Yes.
Council Casa Sanchez?
Yes.
Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Lindell?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is approved.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Mayor Worth, for getting the nominations put together for us. Could you introduce the next item, please, Madam Clerk?
Absolutely. Next item is consideration of bill number 2020-25, and this is an ordinance creating a new section 20-7, Santa Fe City Code 1987, to prohibit certain police activities, including no-knock warrants and requiring the use of body-worn cameras during the execution of any search warrant. And we have Deputy Police Chief Paul Joy that is available for questions.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so I think what I'd like to propose is that we hear from Deputy Chief Joy first with any preliminary introductory remarks, then go to public comment. I know we have at least two people waiting in the attendee room who want to speak to this, then come back to the governing body for questions, and a, getting a motion on the floor for us to address. So with that, Deputy Chief Joy, do you want to speak to this item? Give us an overview of the view that you and the department bring to this, please?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the public, the bill presented, the ordinance being presented is with regard to prohibiting the, our agency from being able to acquire or participate in what's being termed, or what has been termed as a no-knock warrant, which would basically, a lot, which is, would be us getting a warrant signed by a judge that would theoretically allow us to execute the search warrant without doing a knock and announce for the residents in the, in the, for the premises. Also, it outlines some extra requirements for the body cam to require that all participants of the search warrant, regardless of their place for the search warrant, but what I mean by that is not just the folks who are executing the search warrant, but also the individuals who are on the premises to block traffic or who are otherwise involved in the execution of the search warrant itself. Everyone on the premises would be expected to have their body cameras activated prior to the execution of the search warrant. I could be able to answer questions.
We, yeah, I appreciate, we will come to that, I think, perhaps after we've heard from members of the public who are here waiting patiently to speak to us. So with that introduction, thank you, Deputy Chief. I think, Joe, if you want to recognize the people who are in the attendee room who wish to speak to this item, we'll give them a two-minute opportunity to address it, and then come back to the governing body for questions, comments. And then come back to the governing body for uh questions, comments, and uh perhaps a motion and then questions and comments.
Okay.
Let's listen to the residents who've been waiting patiently.
Okay, uh, first up is Stephanie Benonato, and you're unmuted, Ms. Benonato.
Thank you very much. Do I have to get sworn in?
No, ma'am, it's legislation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Stephanie Benonato, um, I'm in support of this ordinance. I think it's a beginning uh for some more accountability. However, I would advocate that um the body cams stay on really, but certainly for stops as well as for searches. I think that's a really important uh aspect that needs to be recorded. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benonato.
Uh, Deputy Chief Joy, I think your micro you're uh not unmuted. You might want to mute that. And there may be some other sound effects in the room. I'm not sure where they're coming. Thank you. Um.
Up next is Emily Keltenbach. Ms. Keltenbach, you are um unmuted.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Emily Colton Bach. I work with the Drug Policy Alliance here in New Mexico and we stand in strong support of this ordinance. Uh, it passed tonight. The city will join a handful of other municipalities um in just a couple of states across the nation that outright ban no-knock warrants. Uh, we feel that Santa Fe is really doing the right thing by ending this practice, which has led to widespread civil rights violations and too often injury and death and disproportionately impacting people of color. Um, this ordinance really is a preemptive move and preventing the potential for serious injury and death of both police officers and our residents. Uh, as we know, in Louisville, Kentucky, if they imagine if they had passed their ban a year ago, Breonna Taylor would still be with us. Um, there are also examples right here in New Mexico of where no-knock warrants led to the injury and death of innocent people. And two thousand and thirteen in Anthony, New Mexico, a SWAT team executed a search warrant for suspected drug dealing, street-level drug dealing. Um, they raided a house at five in the morning uh with they broke blew apart the living room door. They um you threw in stun grenades into the house um and they detonated near three sleeping children. Um, both injuring them physically, but also suffering really severe emotional trauma. So no family should ever fear um that police will storm into their home unannounced without identification and without allowing them uh to open the door to review a search warrant. Many of these warrants have across the country have increased um and specifically around searching for for drugs um to find evidence. Uh, these searching for possession of drugs, whether here in Santa Fe or across the country, uh cannot be valued over um the dignity of our residents', uh privacy, uh injury or death. So um I thank you for bringing this ordinance forward and we strong stand in strong support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Joe, is there anyone else waiting out in the attendee uh room?
No, sir. No one in the room.
Okay, uh, in that case, I think that would close the public uh testimony and we come back to the governing body. Um. Is there uh I'm I'm trying to follow better practices here, uh, city attorney and uh our uh our uh our parliamentarian. Do we want to get a motion on the floor before we get questions or do we want to go with questions and discussion and then go to a motion? I'm looking for guidance.
Uh, on this one, as a legislative matter, I think you can get a motion to start with.
Okay, I think we still we have a lot of hands up and people want to speak, but if we had a motion on the floor, it would give us something to address.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from uh Councilor Mayor Worth, and I heard uh Councilor Garcia's second, so for the record, those are the two voices. And with that said, let's go to uh the governing body who have their hands up, and I will start with Councilwoman Villarreal. Your hand was up first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm in strong support of this and I'd like to co-sponsor it. Um. The one thing that in our discussions with the committee, I think, was challenging for me is that even if we have this preemptive move um in the city, it doesn't necessarily prevent the state from executing any um no-knock warrants. Um, and so I think it's it would be um important for us to then look to our state legislators to consider this as a statewide option so that we are really covered fully and who wholly in this in the um in our state of New Mexico, um because this is just really to to protect um people in the city. And so I don't know if um you had anything else to share about that. Um. Who's on with us from the Police Department?
Deputy Chief Joy.
Deputy Chief Joy, did you have anything to? Sorry, I didn't have it on. I had it on speaker view, so I couldn't see. Did you want to add to that or just say anything about if there's any measures at the state level on this regard? To extend no-knock warrants um bans for the state of New Mexico?
Right, Councilwoman Villarreal, um, a- as you adequately uh expressed, that is correct. This current ordinance would be in uh would really only affect our agency uh and would prevent us from uh both acquiring uh a no-knock warrant, but also would prohibit us from participating in the no-knock warrant that could be potentially acquired by another agency within our uh municipal boundaries. So yet you are you're completely accurate in that uh anything that would to to expand it to other agencies would have to be done at the state level uh to and I'm not aware currently of anything being presented or or um considered at that level.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Thanks for working on this and pushing this forward.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, next up would be Counselor Rivera. Thanks, Mayor. Uh, thank you, uh, Chief Joy. Um. Do we know if the police chief who heads the department is in favor of this and how do we know that?
Uh, Counselor Rivera, uh, Chief Padilla is in favor of this. Uh, we've discussed this at length. He's obviously been with the department longer than I have. Uh, we did our own internal audit trying to identify when we've when we've done last done a no-knock warrant uh and we couldn't find one at least within the last ten years. But he is in favor of the ordinance. Uh, our policy, as it's written currently, does prohibit us from acquiring a no-knock warrant, but doesn't necessarily explicitly uh prevent us from participating in a no-knock warrant from another agency. But even that being said, uh, we weren't able to find one that we've even participated in. But but to short answer to your question, the chief is in favor of this of this bill.
So again, he's the leader of the department. So how do I know for sure? Did he submit something in writing? Has he mentioned it before?
He did sign off on the on the memo that I wrote to the governing body with regard to the ordinance uh expressing his approval.
Okay, is there a reason he wasn't here tonight?
I I'm not aware. I I I'm the assigned, I'm not assigned, but I'm I'm signed on with the bill, so I that I'm here to.
All right, I don't mean to put you on the spot there. I do um support this legislation. Um. I just think it's unfortunate that he wasn't here to uh answer questions on his own behalf. So thank you, Chief. I appreciate you being here. Thank you, Counselor. Uh, I believe Counselor Garcia, your hand was up next.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think I thought I had signed on as a co-sponsor during committee process, but please put me down as a co-sponsor again. I mean, I want to make sure because I do strongly support this ordinance. Um, I'm glad that we are being proactive and reactive and protecting our community. It's something that I think that it it whether a no-knock has been carried out within the last ten years or five years, I think this is a practice that I I'm strongly behind that we don't carry forward with. Um. I know we had talked about this in other committees where um we can't necessarily enforce what county, state, or federal entities do. Um, but if we can work with those jurisdictions to encourage them and let them know what our beliefs are, it might um deter it it might have a judge have a second consideration in regards to issuing that that no-knock warrant tonight. So not only working with our our county, state, and federal entities, working with our judges to have them ensure they understand where we stand as a city. Um, and just once again, I strongly support this. Thank you for bringing this forth and uh one life lost is too many and and I'm glad we're moving forward in this direction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. I think Chief Padilla has just I think he joined us. He may have been waiting for this item to come up. Chief Padilla, are you on this call at this time? Or are you muted? Well, we'll.
Mayor, he's in the attendee room. He needs to be promoted, it looks like.
Uh, Joe, can you bring the chief into the panelist? We can, we can, uh, Joe, are you there? Is there somebody else who can promote Chief Padilla?
Mayor, are you a co-host? You might be able to. I'm not sure.
I absolutely have that within my power. And I believe that the chief has joined the panelist room. I could be wrong. Chief, are you there?
I am, Mayor. Thank you very much uh for promoting me. I didn't know there was a next rank above this, but hey, here we go. Um, Council Rivera, I did hear your question. Um, I had another engagement, but of course um I always know what's happening here and there, so I was watching on the side and I am fully support of this as a department has a great uh record of handling situations and support of this progress all the way around. It's the right move. And like I said, based upon the stats, the numbers, we haven't served this type of warrant here um in a long time, so fully supportive of it.
Thank you. Counselor Rivera, did you want to follow up because you were asking if the chief were around? I think he was monitoring, but not in the room. If you have another question, I'll give you the floor back. No, my expectation is that he would have been here from the beginning, so um that was just my point. Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir. Um, Counselor Vial Coppler, I believe you had your hand was up next.
Thank you, Mayor. I um I just want to say I do fully support this, uh, but I have some couple of questions. One is uh I I see that the film is going to be kept for five years and I wondered what the statute statutes of limitations are on potential cases. Is that is five years long enough?
Uh, Deputy Chief or Chief, do you have a uh have you looked into what the uh requirements or uh legal issues might be for retention of the uh video?
So um Councilwoman uh Coppler Vial or Vial Coppler rather, um, there so the our current policy also has it in place for um five years plus one retention, so a total of six years. Uh, this is the five-year uh retention does go above what is recommended for agencies statewide. I believe it's three years. Um, and so and uh I I could be wrong in that, but I believe that's accurate. Uh, the statutes of limitations uh vary depending on the extent of the crime. Um, but I for for instance, uh, I'll use like homicide as an example. Um. That that would be a case that would be investigated and and pursued by our investigations, our uh criminal uh our violent crimes unit, rather. And so as an example, because that case would be uh carried over, it wouldn't be just a uh a random incident. Uh, that case would be maintained, that video would be maintained by the case agent for the duration of the case. Um, that so that's just an example. So even though hypothetically uh the system would purge any video after after six years, one-year retention plus the extra five, uh because it's an open investigation, uh, it would be held on beyond that by our uh evidence.
Um, so I'm not sure if I read it in the actual ordinance or the FIR uh, but I thought I s- I saw five years. So you're saying essentially they keep the the video for six years?
So Councilwoman Coppler Vial or Vial Coppler, sorry. Um, the current our current policy is one year and one uh server, and then it goes on to another server for five years. The way the ordinance reads is it's at least five years. So I either way, uh, it's going to be at least a five-year retention.
Okay, so I know sometimes there are other drivers of this whereby another thing explained in here is how much uh space we have to retain video. So a technician could say, oh, this is five years and boom, it's gone. And not know that there's another year here. We need to, you know, you're saying we need to have it. And and then on in the other example you gave is uh I thought I heard you say, you know, in a particular case, it would just be evidence held by whoever's holding it for the duration of the case. But what if there's a slip-up and somebody reads this and it says five years and then it's gone? I I just want to avoid, I want to make sure we hang on to it as long, maybe longer than than what our storage capacity is in IT. Uh, so that we don't inadvertently destroy evidence. And I'm I'm, you know, it only takes one so to lose a case if you don't have the evidence. And we've had a lot of evidence issues. Other jurisdictions have had evidence issues. Uh, and and so I just want to make sure that we, you know, we're in the starting blocks now, that we have language that's tight and that doesn't leave too much room for interpretation or error.
Right, uh, Councilwoman Vial Coppler. So just to make sure, I I want to clarify a little bit too. So when I when I say talk about evidence, um, so the servers, as you accurately uh expressed, do they have a limited capacity? Um, however, uh, as technology advances, as storage advances, uh, you know, potentially to a cloud-based server, there are some other things that we're working on uh that Deputy Chief Aldes is working on with our various upgrades to evidence. So but when something is retained as evidence, it's it's not stored on the server. It's it's hard copies are are retained and and made and and held on as evidence. There so it regardless if it were to be purged from the current storage system or the the server, rather, um, it would still be retained separately as uh either in a thumb drive or other other m- media.
Okay, uh. So we just have to trust that that's happening because it's in your internal. I don't even know if you have the, do you have this in writing? In your internal operations?
Uh, Councilwoman Vial Coppler, we do have an evidence policy uh that that does cover various um means of storing and saving.
But does it doesn't cover this yet though because we haven't passed it. Is that right or or does it?
We do have a evidence, we do in our body worn camera retention uh in the policy for our body worn camera. That's where we I advise that it, we have the one uh year retention in the in the initial server and then the five years after that. That's in our body worn camera policy.
Well, Mayor, if you look at the bottom of this ordinance or resolution, I can't remember what it is, um, the very last uh item C, uh, I I don't know, it says retained for five years. So I I don't know, we might want to lengthen that because I'm hearing six years, really.
Well, let me see if I can uh ask um Chief Joy, it essentially what if I understand you correctly, what you're saying is that the way the ordinance is drafted is designed to um align with our existing policy on body worn camera videos. It it shouldn't deviate from that policy at all. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
So, Mr. Mayor, what the what the ordinance outlines is regardless of what changes we may have to the policy in the future, at the very least, it will be retained for no less than five years uh as required by ordinance or uh by by the ordinance. So um regardless of what changes our policy may and we can always make our So regardless of what changes our policy, we can always make our policy more. Restrictive or have more. Requirements of us, but with the ordinance, it would. Have it is, so it can, no matter what, it can be no less than five years. So when I say our, our current policy would in total be six years. That doesn't necessarily need, I mean, however the ordinance is, is written. It's good to have that kind of no less than, no matter what. That five-year requirement. So we can. As, as technology advances and our ability to store improves and changes over the years. We may very well be able to update our policy to, to hypothetically, completely hypothetically. Do, do a ten-year retention or however, however long we can, can keep up with the technology to allow for it. But at the very least, the ordinance would lock us in to, no matter what. It's at least a five-year retention.
So, okay, thank you for that. Now I'm going to turn the coin a little bit. So if we say, because this says. Must be retained for five years, which is to me a finite time period. Could be some room for interpretation. However, what if you're involved in, in defending a. A case and the, the person, the defendant. Petitions the court to destroy evidence because the ordinance says you only keep it for five years. So it's inadmissible. Could that happen?
Uh, Councilwoman Vial Cappel, that could not happen regardless of the, of the policy, it wouldn't override the fact that it's still evidence in a crime. So, so. That in, in this hypothetical scenario, I would expect that petition to fail.
Maybe, but anyway. I, I think that I would be more comfortable if what I hear you say is six years for sure. That this said six years and that it matched. That's my take on this, Mayor.
Thank you.
Because this is law, so that I think, you know, it's not a resolution, so to me it's.
It's our ordinance, yeah. Are there others wishing to be heard at this?
I had, I forgot to ask.
No, go ahead. You have the floor still.
It didn't say in the FIR, but I'm curious, how much does a body camera cost?
Councilwoman Vial Cappel, that, I don't know, I can defer that to Chief Padilla, but that's. Chief, Deputy Chief Valdez. Works on the pricing and, and the acquire, acquisition of the, our technology, technology. So I wouldn't be able to answer specifically what a body worn camera in and of itself would cost.
So Mayor, Mayor, councilors, on average, they run about eight hundred dollars with the current system that we're on.
Okay, so thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Other members of the governing body want to speak to the. The motion on the floor. I would, I would take one minute just to say, I think this is a, a very good step for the city to take. I've, I know that we're all very deeply invested in both public safety. From the point of view of having our laws enforced thoroughly. And we're also deeply concerned about public safety from the way those laws are enforced. And we are part of a national conversation. Councilwoman Villarreal and. Counselor Rivera are running our, are co-chairing our task force on public health and safety. I think this is another step in the direction of Santa Fe being a leader. If you look at our use of, of force policies and the. Eight Can't Wait list that was presented some time ago, as well as. An assessment that was asked for by former HUD Secretary Julian Castro. I think our policies line up as. Very progressive and demonstrate the commitment of our police department. To do the right thing in the right way for the well-being of our, of our residents. This adds to that. List of things that we're doing the right way. And to me, it is a. Indication of the quality of the men and women in our police department that they are fully in support of this ordinance. They see its value and they recognize the way in which policing should take care of people. At the same time that we take care of enforcing the laws. So I'm very encouraged by. The support that this is receiving and I, I feel we can move another step forward toward. Being a leader in reimagining policing in the 21st century. If there are no other questions or comments at this time, I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Yes, Counselor Malworth?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Viad, yeah?
Yes, I'd like to co-sponsor.
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Beta?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez? Counselor Garcia?
Yes, and I also would like to co-sponsor.
Yes, sir. Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Mayor Webber?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion has been approved.
Thank you. And thank you to the folks who awaited for the public hearing. Again, we are very sorry to be. Hours behind in our, in our, doing your business. With that having been completed, we now cycle back. And I think the clerk, actually, I think the next item is matters from the city clerk, unless I'm mistaken.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind everybody to get out and vote.
Yes, thank you, Madam. And then we come to the communications from the governing body and I will. Give the floor first to Counselor Vial Cappel. You're the first person on my screen.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to. Read into the record a resolution renaming Alto Park as Ron Shirley Alto Park. So I'll be moving, that'll be moving through committees and. I just, I voted already, so I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Woman Villarreal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to co-sponsor what Councilwoman. Vial Cappel just introduced the renaming of Alto Park to Ron Shirley Alto Park and. Based on the information that we just got from petitions from the floor. I'm extremely disappointed that nobody notified us about how the process. Would be that the Coalition of Lateral Communities membership. Would move forward without approval by the governing body. And I want to know more about why that happened. We, it was supposed to go through committee. It was. Discussion item and then it got taken off and I'd asked about it, like where are we at with this membership? And what's the value of it to the city? And so I'm extremely disappointed that we route. And so I want information about how that came about. And I don't know if the city manager or who can. Tell me more about how this got pushed through without us even having any dialogue about it or transparency.
Okay, well, I think we'll take, I, I think at the, at the moment. Communications from the governing body will put your query in the record and come back to it at the appropriate time. I recognize Counselor Cassidy Sanchez next.
Before I go on, let me just say that I appreciated the staff. Putting together the, the snow removal plan. It was extremely helpful to have it on social media. Because there were questions happening that people didn't understand why certain roads weren't cleared and it was state roads. So I think I just wanted to thank. Constituent Services for being able to get that on social media so we could share it to, to the rest of our constituents. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cassidy Sanchez, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I do also want to thank staff for the snow removal plan. I also found that to be very helpful. As people were asking about our streets and I really appreciate them having put that together for us. I think the biggest thing is, you know, sort of the last governing body meeting before the election, please go vote. I voted at the fairgrounds last week and it was. Easy, very easy, very felt very safe, very socially distanced and. You know, I'm sure lines might be starting to build up, so go ahead and, and do it early if you can. To avoid any big long lines on election day. And, and that is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Lindell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have anything other than. Saying what's already been said. I can say it quickly. Make sure you vote. And a big thank you to the guys and gals that got the streets taken care of so well. They really did a terrific job and I appreciate it. So stay safe, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garcia?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just echo that as well. Shout out to the streets team. And also to the, to the. Folks that pick up all of our recyclables and trash or whatnot. Today was trash day at my house and I was thankful I had to will it out and, you know. Knee-deep snow. I'm only joking. We had probably about four inches at my house, but. You know, I can only imagine how challenging it might be to navigate one of those big machines in snowy, treacherous terrain like we had today. I'll, I'll respond to Counselor Villarreal's comment. We have not passed the JPA. I think there was some misunderstanding. Stay tuned. I appreciate the encouragement and, and the thoughts about it. That we haven't passed, passed the JPA. We're working on the background work and it will be going through committee here soon. So hold tight. I think maybe there was some, some folks from our community that had misunderstood the process, but we have not passed. The, the recent JPA. So hopefully that reassures you somewhat. Tomorrow night, I'll be working with a community member, Tomas Rivera. Going to have a community conversation with them in regards to housing resources that are available. There's lots of CARES Act funding that is available for, you know, if you're past due on your rent. Even some, some instances, if you're past due on your mortgage. So there's lots and lots of resources out there and we want to make sure that. Our community members fully understand what's out there, what's available, who has the resources. I, I think, you know, MFA, the Mortgage Finance Authority, just came out that they've got tons of resources as well, so. Not only do we in the county have resources, they have resources. There's lots of places that have resources. We want to make sure everybody knows where they can go to get some support. As well, vote, get out, vote. There's only five days left. I know the big push was for absentee voting. Please don't mail it. If you have an absentee ballot, just drive on down to the county clerk's office and, and drop it off. Or vote in person, as Counselor Cassidy Sanchez said, you know, lines are getting shorter by the day. I think we had an overwhelming response at the beginning, but they're getting shorter and shorter. So just get out and vote. It's your civic duty. You'll feel better for it and then you get a cool sticker after. With that, as well, be safe. You know, it's, it's cold. We've, we've got some, probably still some icy roads out there. And if you're like at my house, we've got some crazy icicles growing, so watch out on the ground and also for the things on top of you that might fall. And with that, everybody, have a, please have a safe Halloween. I know it's going to be different this year. We at our house, we're going to have a trick or treat kind of candy hunt versus going out and trick or treating. So we're still going to celebrate. We're going to get into some costumes and have some fun. But everybody, please have fun, be safe and do something spooktacular. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rivera, you have the floor.
I have nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Abada?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to co-sponsor the renaming of Alto Park also. And I want to say thank you to the Southwest Santa Fe Advocates. We have an early voting site at the South Side Library. Due to that group's efforts in working with our county clerk and this is the first time. We're able to vote for a general election at the South Side Library. So thank you very much to Ruth and Alba and the group there with the Southwest Santa Fe. Advocates. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Mayor Worth, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Everything I needed to say has been said.
Okay. I have a resolution to introduce adopting Impact Fee Capital Improvements Plan twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-seven for roads, parks, fire, EMS, and police. Update the city's Impact Fee Capital Improvement Plan land use assumptions. And impact fees as required by the State Development Fees Act. And in ordinance amending section fourteen dash eight point one four E to adopt a new impact fee schedule. Clarify appropriate land use categories as they relate to impact fee collection and to establish an effective date. Those will be working their way through our planning commission committees. Very briefly, we had forty-six new COVID cases today. Our rolling average, seven week, or seven, uh, seven-day, one-week average is now. In the neighborhood of forty, thirty-five, forty cases a day. I know this is a, an area where we did terrific work early on. There was early. Attention and discipline to social distancing, wearing face masks. Using hand sanitizer, staying home if you don't have to go out. There was a article, I believe, in the newspaper that cited, that created a direct correlation between. Face mask wearing and reducing the incidence of the spread of COVID. We really need to be very, very focused on COVID nineteen right now. And it's something that the city will help with. We're doing outreach with Santa Fe Promise two point O. To get the message out, to get masks and hand sanitizer and resources out. I know Counselor Abada is carrying the message to some of the young people on the south side that they can be. COVID ambassadors for their own families to keep. Older grandma, grandpa, auntie, and uncle safe. We are all in this together and we've got to bend the curve. We've got to bring it back down. So please, everybody, focus on COVID. And reducing the spread of COVID right now. Second, everybody said it, we're all saying it together, vote. Vote now. And also, respect people who don't agree with you. We had some people report this morning that their lawn signs, their, their campaign signs were vandalized. With spray paint. That's not, that's not Santa Fe, folks. We may disagree, but we respect each other. So please, while you may disagree with somebody's candidate or position on an issue. Let's show respect for each other. Let's be absolutely united in our. Commitment to democracy and to participating, whether we agree with somebody else or not. The country is very badly divided right now and there are parts of the country where. Cities are bracing for this election, worrying that there will be serious disruption regardless of. Who wins at the top of the ticket. Let's not have Santa Fe, Santa Fe be that place. Let's have Santa Fe be the place where. We can be strong in our views, but even stronger in our respect for each other. So please vote and also understand that there are people who see the world through very different eyes. And that doesn't make them your enemy. It doesn't make them your opponent. That simply makes them your fellow. American, your fellow Santa Fean, your fellow New Mexican. So let's all show respect, restraint, and get out and vote for the, for whatever point of view we, we hold. Dear in our hearts. Uh, thank you, everybody. I think that completes tonight's business and we stand adjourned.